To order today is Thursday, November 21st, 2013. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Graney?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Counselor Smith said he'd be a few minutes late.
Counselor Rzika?
Here.
Mayor Quill?
Here. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment in silent prayer reflection, and I ask this evening if you keep in mind Trooper Russ Riley, local Auburn kid who was a state trooper killed and basically on the line of duty the other day. So, if you keep him and his family in your thoughts. Thank you. Please be seated. Start out with our public to be heard. Clerk, if you would, read our rules.
At this time, we will open the public to be heard portion of our council meeting. As a reminder, pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure, prior to addressing councils, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and affiliation, if any. All comments should be addressed to the entire council and not to individual staff members. Your remarks should be limited to three minutes and concern issues only involving city councils, city government, or matters of general city concern. Issues involving specific employees of the city should be directed to the city manager outside of this meeting, and all speakers before council should observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy. Personal attacks or abusive language will be ruled out of order.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone desiring to be heard?
Good evening. Ron Quill, Case Avenue. I'm also the chairman of the Salvation Army Board. Once again, I'd like to appeal to the public to donate turkeys, whatever they would like, to our Thanksgiving dinner we held this next Thursday. We start cooking tomorrow, so it's a whole week of work and everything else. If, for some reason, you're unable to come up with a turkey, please donate to the food pantry. We are a food pantry precipi-- participant. Almost had precipi-- anyways, we would appreciate that as well. Any one of the food pantries will accept donations of non-perishables, and it'll help get people through the winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quill.
That's Smith, 65 Matty Street.
Got order, sir. Mr. Cuddy, please.
Terry Cuddy, 133 South Hoops Ave. Tonight, I'm addressing the proposed Council Resolution Number 132 of 2013, transferring the Auburn City Ambulance Service Certificate. Currently, the City of Auburn and TLC Emergency Medical Services maintain a positive mutual relationship that successfully meets the needs of the people in Auburn. Since 2006, Auburn has held the Certificate of Need pursuant to Article 30 of the Public Health Law. This gives the City of Auburn the authority to provide oversight and guarantee accountability for whatever ambulance service works within the city limits. I do not see any reason why Auburn should relinquish any responsibility to our citizens' public health and safety to a private company. It seems especially odd that the Certificate of Need transfer corresponds with a 10-year contract and franchise agreement when the city and TLC just signed a five-year contract in July 2013. TLC provides excellent service to the people of Auburn, and they would continue to do so without the transference of Certificate of Need. They are currently bound by the current contract enacted this summer to do so, and the City of Auburn is bound to the New York State Department of Health to oversee that any and all ambulance services comply with public health regulations. I'm wary of any long-term contract that basically takes control out of our municipal authority away needlessly. I am asking their current council to not pass Resolution 132 of 2013. To put it simply, if it isn't broke, don't try to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy. Anyone else this evening desiring to be heard? Tim, please. Mr. Donovan.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Timothy Donovan. I reside at 133 Prospect Street. Mayor Quill, members of council. Again, Tim Donovan, community advocate, and I am a member of the Kyuga County Homeless Task Force Executive Committee. National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, which is identified this week from the 16th of November to the 24th, 2013, is a national endeavor by the National Coalition for homeless-- excuse me-- to promote education, action, and awareness about hunger and homelessness. In Auburn and surrounding areas, there are men, women, and children who are living under homeless conditions or near homeless conditions. We are fortunate in our community to have advocates and community members of organizations to raise awareness and stress the importance of ending homelessness. At this time, I would like to thank members of the Kyuga County Homeless Task Force who provide the services, as well as the generous members of our community who donate the resources such as food, clothing, shelter to the homeless. I have quoted many times, Auburn in this surrounding areas is one of the most generous communities I've witnessed when it comes to helping people in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Anyone else desiring? Mr. Davis, please.
Yes. Norm Davis, also on the executive board of the Salvation Army. I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Quill stated about the turkeys and everything, and I want to thank the community at large for all their donations as far as the turkey and perishable canned goods are concerned. We really appreciate it. This is a giving and loving community, and we're very blessed to have and be in a community such as Auburn, New York. So, again, on behalf of the executive committee of the Salvation Army, thank Auburn, New York. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else this evening? Very well, move along to the approval of meeting minutes from October 30th, 2013. Sponsor, Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Rzika. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rzika?
Yes.
Aye.
Carrie.
Connie Riley from Auburn. Never get it right. Update on the holiday parade. How's that, Connie?
That sounds great.
Thank you.
Connie Riley, Director at the Downtown Business Improvement District. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the parade. You all have a little packet in front of you, and there are a few extras up here if anyone wants one. Thank you also for helping to sponsor this holiday parade. We appreciate all of the city's-- everything they do to pull this parade off. The day begins with the free family fun activities in the Genesee Mall Center. Carl Yowensky and Peter Marshall are always very helpful in letting us use the inside of their mall. We also have the very popular Three Horse-Drawn Wagon Rides that is a big hit, and I should say, all of these events are free. It's very important to bid to provide these at no charge to the community. We also will have the Kyuga County Sheriff's Department during doing the Safe Child Photo ID Program. That's a very valuable program, and again, it's very popular. This year, something new. We'll be having Brad Cole do caricatures of people, and he is the one that created this flyer with the Santa on it. He donated his services, and that's so nice of him. Marie McEvers will be doing face painting, and she paints not only little kids' faces, but like lots of adults, like their faces painted, too. The Believers Chapel, this is their third year helping us, and they provide a lot of activities to keep people busy while they're waiting in line for the horse-drawn wagon rides or the Photo ID Program. Also, Creation Station will be with us this year, providing free activities. Jane Stubbs will be indoors this year with her music, and the new Eka Yoga Studio at the Genesee Mall will be doing demonstrations. The Kyuga Red Cross will have things to do. Kyuga County Agricultural Society. The ABC Kyuga Group will be doing hopscotch game. We're also going to have a pango table, and we'll be promoting the pango system for parking, which is a good idea to get signed up for this time of year. Osteria Salina, the new restaurant on State Street, is opening very soon, and they will be handing out free samples of their menu items. And then, the parade begins at 6:00 with the Auburn Civic Band on the Showmobil stage at the bus stop area. And after the parade, which first, second, and third prizes will be awarded to floats, Mayor Quill will be lighting the tree that looks so nice just outside of City Hall here. He'll be relighting the tree for that evening. Santa will be going over to the Genesee Mall and talking to people, and the St. Ophansis Group will be doing a guitar sing-along as background music to Santa Claus. So, I can't tell you how much the families in this community enjoy all of these free activities. So, thank you again to the city for helping make this all a reality. We're also promoting Shop Locally, which is very important, that we support our local businesses that are so generous when we all go to them for donations for all of the many fundraisers that we have for people. This is the time of year that we can support them. So, I know that you all received invitations to walk in the parade, and Mayor Quill said I should assume that everyone will be there. And of course, it begins at the top of the East Hill at the Fulton Street intersection, and if you are there between 5:30 and 6:45, we can get you into the very front of the parade that evening.
Could you say the time again, Connie? Please.
5:30 quarter of-- yeah, 5:45, not 6:45. 5:30 quarter of 6:00 will be good to be there.
Connie, thinking of my daughter, Connie, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You did overlook Dot's Restaurant, and--
I did.
And I don't want them to feel that we--
That's right. And I kept them till last because they have been so good every year to hand out those samples of chili, and people really, really appreciate it, and they hand out a lot of chili, so we appreciate them also. Thank you.
Absolutely. Counselor Camardo.
Connie, as you know, we talked earlier about maybe some additional lights and decorations downtown.
Mm-hmm.
If there's a way that you can talk with Mike Talbott and try to do some other things to--
Yep.
--make it more festive, it would be really appreciated. As you know, we mentioned maybe decorating some of the trees and some other things that might-- you might have at your disposal, so whatever could be done, I'm sure we'd--
I have been talking with Mike, and I think we need to talk with Doug to draw this all together, but I know DPW has some extra lights. I have a very large artificial tree that I would like to see in the gazebo across the street here, and if the city doesn't have lights for that, I have some extra strings personally that I could be-- I'd be glad to bring in. So, Doug will be having an email to you.
Okay.
And again, thank you so much for partnering with us. The Auburn Civic Band is very anxious to play their tunes and will wish for either warm weather or a little snow for atmosphere. No rain. So, thank you.
Connie, we spoke before the meeting. Counselor-elect--
Yes.
McCutcheon and Cuddy are both welcome to join us.
Yes, and I think you got invitations. Yes.
Very good.
Yeah, and of course, all the county legislators coming and going were invited, so--
Very good.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Public announcements?
I have a few. City Council will hold its regular weekly meeting on Tuesday, November 26th at 6:00 PM. There will be no council meeting on Thursday, November 28th. Regular weekly meetings will resume on Thursday, December 5th at 6:00 PM. City Hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 28th and 29th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Tax bills, water bills, parking tickets, any payments such as that, or many other services can be made through our cities-- through the city's website 24 hours a day. And the city's weekly refuse collection schedule has changed slightly. We're putting information in as many different outlets as we can. It's the City of Auburn Solid Waste Department has published the schedule for the holiday week, and basically, if I read it, if I can read it without confusing people. If your regular pickup day is Tuesday, it will now be Monday, November 25th. If it's regularly Wednesday, it will be Tuesday, the 26th. If it's usually Thursday, it will be Wednesday, the 27th, and if it's usually on Friday, it will still be on Friday. In addition, there will be no bagged yard waste pickup on Monday, November 25th, and no refuse collection on Saturday. And the Solid Waste Department is asking, if possible, when possible, if we would assist our neighbors that may not be aware of the schedule changes, if possible. And again, this is going to be published on our website and in various other places to help people remember. That's it.
Are your announcements?
It is.
Thank you. Mr. Selby, City Manager's Report?
I don't have anything this evening, Mayor. Disappointed?
No, no. Actually, things are hunky-dory, so that's good. Thank you, Doug. Presentation petitions and communications?
None.
Seeker resolutions?
None.
Ordinances?
None.
Council Resolution Number 130 of 2013, authorizing the sale of 49 Fitch Avenue. We have a sponsor. Counselor Rzika, seconded by Counselor Camardo.
Land Sale Resolution Number 130 of 2013 by Counselor Rzika, seconded by Counselor Camardo. Whereas the City of Auburn is the owner of certain premises commonly known as 49 Fitch Avenue, Auburn, New York, and more particularly identified by its tax map number, and whereas the said parcel has a frontage on Fitch Avenue of 74.25 feet and a depth of 165 feet and as suitable as a building lot. And whereas the city has been contacted by Christian and Erica O'Hara, who are desirous of obtaining title to the parcel with the intention to erect residence thereon and have offered a sum of $4,000 to purchase the property. And whereas the parcel is not needed by the City of Auburn and is surplus property. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve the sale of premises commonly known as 49 Fitch Avenue, Auburn, New York, to Christian and Erica O'Hara for the sum of $4,000, and has further authorized the mayor to sign any and all documents in order to convey title to the premises to the purchasers.
Thank you. Discussion, council? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Council Resolution Number 131 of 2013, amending a purchase power agreement with New York State Electric and Gas Corporation. We have a sponsor. Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Rzika.
Council Resolution Number 131 of 2013 by Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Rzika. Whereas a small renewable generator power purchase agreement was entered into between the City of Auburn, here and after referred to as the city, and the New York State Electric and Gas Corporation, here and after referred to as NICEG, was made and entered into on the first day of June, 2010, and provided that the delivery of energy from the city to NICEG would occur for a period of June 1st, 2010, to June 31st, 2010. And whereas the parties have entered into amendments to the purchase power agreement extending the delivery term to include the period up to and including December 31st, 2011, December 31st, 2012, and December 31st, 2013. And whereas the parties are mutually agreeable to enter into an amendment of the delivery term to extend from the period of January 1st, 2014, up to and including December 31st, 2014. And whereas all of the other provisions of the purchase power agreement originally entered into on the 16th day of June, 2010, shall remain in full force and effect from and after the date of this amendment, and the parties ratify and confirm the agreement in each of its obligations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize an amendment to the small renewable generator power purchase agreement between New York State Electric and Gas Corporation and the City of Auburn to extend the delivery term of the agreement for the period from January 1st, 2014, to and including December 31st, 2014. And the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents in order to amend the original agreement and continue the delivery of energy.
Mr. Selby or Mr. Rossi, would you care to just enlighten us a little bit, just as to what we're voting on?
Yes, this is an agreement that's been in effect since almost the first operation of the generator, and it allows the city to sell the energy which is-- which the city's obligated to buy in its entirety. And not being able to use all the energy for city purposes, it is an outlet to allow us to recoup some of our expenses for the purchase of the electricity. And as the city is entering into a process and an agreement for the sale of renewable energy credits, which hopefully will occur within the next 30 to 60 days, this agreement has a provision that the city can opt out of this agreement and sell into an ISO market which will return greater funds to the city for the sale of that electricity. This is an agreement that we've renewed, as you see the renewal dates for the past over three years, and it's been a good cooperative agreement between the city and NICEG.
Very good. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Council Resolution Number 132 of 2013, transferring the Auburn City Ambulance Service Certificate. We have a sponsor. Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Rzika.
Council Resolution Number 132 of 2013 by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Rzika. Whereas on June 2nd, 2006, the New York State Department of Health issued an ambulance service certificate for the Auburn City Ambulance pursuant to the provisions of Article 30, the Public Health Law. Thereafter, the City of Auburn entered into an agreement with TLC Emergency Medical Services Inc., here and after referred to as TLC. And whereas the City of Auburn has continued to designate TLC to provide ambulance service for the City of Auburn pursuant to the certificate issued by the Department of Health, and has renewed the service agreement with TLC for an additional five years commencing July 1st, 2013. And whereas TLC has requested that the ambulance service certificate be transferred from the City of Auburn to TLC, and that TLC has requested a franchise agreement for the transfer and would continue to operate the ambulance service within the City of Auburn, New York. And whereas it is necessary that the City of Auburn approve a resolution to transfer the ambulance service certificate for the Auburn City Ambulance to TLC Medical Services, Inc., pursuant to an agreed franchise agreement being executed between the parties. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Auburn does hereby transfer the ambulance service certificate issued by the New York State Department of Health to the Auburn City Ambulance pursuant to provisions of Article 30 of Public Health Law, and that the City of Auburn and TLC Emergency Medical Services enter into a franchise agreement for the continued operation of ambulance service within the City of Auburn, and the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to finalize that transfer.
Counsel?
Yes, there's some language that needs to be added to this, and I'd like to make an amendment, and I want to make this subject to the approval of the Department of Health in accordance with the requirements of the Public Health Law, Article 30, and DOH-BEMS Policy Statement 06-06. Ultimately, they have to approve this.
Motion on the floor to amend the resolution?
I'll secondhand a motion.
Second a motion on that.
I probably would need him to repeat.
Counselor Rzika, if you could repeat that.
Unless you have it in writing.
I would like this to be subject to the approval of the Department of Health in accordance with the requirements of the Public Health Law, Article 30, and DOH-BEMS Policy
Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Camardo?
Can you have discussion on it?
We can, because it's not the table.
On the motion.
Okay. I'd just like some-- we're in receipt of a letter from New York State Department of Health directing the city that the Certificate of Need cannot be transferred. Could you give us some explanation on that, John, if you would, please?
Well, as all of the members of the council received this-- copied this letter. I received it late yesterday afternoon. I have attempted to contact the commissioner who sent the letter, and unfortunately, she was not at work today. But it appears from her statement that the provisions of the Public Health Law, specifically Article 30, do not allow a municipality to transfer the authority to operate the ambulance service. Now, if there are other regulations in reference to this matter, I have not had the opportunity to research that. I did read the sections of law which are contained in that letter of November 20th, and it appears that the language that she refers to, that the city cannot transfer the license, is consistent with those sentence-- those sections of law. I would state that I believe that there's further research and clarification necessary in order that this be a valid resolution, that the city has the legal ability to affect this transfer. I'm not comfortable at this time to say that the city does, and now we have a contrary opinion from the commissioner of that section dealing with ambulance service from the Department of Health. Those are my feelings on it at this time, and I intend to pursue this matter further. I have sent an email this afternoon directly to the commissioner for clarification, and of course, since she wasn't there, I did not receive any response, but I believe it's prudent that we get all of the information, and I agree with Counselor Rzika's amendment that it should be subject to the approval of the Department of Health if that approval is forthcoming, or if the Department of Health is going to legally permit a transfer. So, I think that language is germane, and I feel that I just need more legal clarification before we can--
Shouldn't we have all the facts in front of us before we act on a resolution?
Should we have what?
Shouldn't we have all the facts in front of us before we act on a resolution?
I would be more comfortable.
Counsel, if I may, and I would prefer at this time, if we could address Counselor Rzika's amendment, and then we can get into the meat of the matter. If that's agreeable with counsel?
Yep.
Does anyone else care to speak in regards to Counselor Rzika's amendment? Clerk, if you'll call the roll in regards to the amended-- to the added language for Counselor Rzika.
Okay, I'm calling the roll on the amendment.
That's correct.
Counselor Graney?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
No.
Then it is amended.
It is amended.
Yeah, there's three to two.
Counsel, now we'll open up to the discussion on the amendment.
The-- this--
The, this agency has no jurisdiction whatsoever in what we do as a council, okay? We can, we can vote on this, and all this is going to do is continue with the process.
Correct.
So once we vote on this, it'll go to them, and then they'll decide whether or not to approve it. Now, if TLC wants to challenge it in litigation, TLC has the right to do that or not to do that, and that will be on TLC's dime, it won't be on our dime. So they have, as far as, was it Evans' last name? As far as them telling us what we can do and cannot do, they have zero jurisdiction what this council can approve or not approve of. So what we approved tonight, this resolution we approved tonight to hand over the certificate, the CON, the Certificate of Need, they're the ones that are going to decide yes or no, whether or not that transfer can happen.
Well, the first question.
You're absolutely correct, man, on that.
The first question is whether the city wants to turn that over or not. I think that's the first discussion we need to have. I am not comfortable with turning over, even though I, I think that TLC does an excellent job in the community, I'm worried about what's going to happen in the future. I'm worried about the city having oversight with such a crucial service that's provided to the taxpayers of the City of Auburn, and I want to be very cautious in doing this. And Doug, you and I talked a little bit about this today, and John, you probably have answered this question. Once we give up the Certificate of Need, we won't have a franchise anymore to give out to anybody, correct? Once that, once that need is transferred.
Once, once it's gone from the city, and it's in some other entity's hand, we, I don't see any way we can go reapply unless that other entity gives up that, that authority.
So we will have, we will have absolutely no oversight of how that service is provided in the community at all?
The only oversight that the city would have is if it's entered into a franchise agreement, and specific terms are set forth in that franchise agreement, that's the oversight.
Now, once the certificate is gone, though, do we still have a franchise agreement, or will that go away too?
That's, as you will know, that was a contingency in this resolution also, that we, it would have to be a satisfactory franchise agreement, which this council would have to approve.
Right. So, so that being said, I think, to me, I say we're covered with this franchise agreement, and I would like to see if the folks at TLC can come up and expound on the benefits that the city would experience, and the community would experience with this transfer of the Certificate of Need.
But before they do, before they come up, really, nothing's going to change, because there's still, the stipulations are still the same that we have currently right now on the contract for five years.
Exactly.
So we add another five years, they're still under those same stipulations. If their quality of service deteriorates, okay, A, they're in trouble by the state, they still have to meet the same time requirement, response time. If they don't, they're in trouble by the state, and we're covered by the franchise agreement, so nothing really changes.
And this takes all the liability away from the city.
And we look at that, and that's a good question. I mean, I have, I'm thinking long-term as well. And, and for, for over a year, this council, members of this council, have been working to begin the process of the transfer of the CON.
Absolutely.
So this is, this is something we want to see completed. And looking at some of the reasons why we wanted to transfer the CON, and you, over the years, and stuff I've written down from months and months of discussion that we've had here on this, on this council floor, you know, one is, the fire chief has repeatedly discussed the issue of liability, having a contractor provide the service. This removes all liability. We give up the CON, the city has less and less liability, little to no liability. Two, the city manager had, has stated a number of times, and I don't blame him, because he is not a doctor, he was uncomfortable as acting as a CEO, and he preferred not to do that of an ambulance service. I remember Counselor McNabb saying continuously on the council floor, he didn't like the fact that our name were on these ambulances because of the liability. Now we're removed from that by giving up the Certificate of Need. So again, the liability factor, erase that. The city will continue to realize and benefit from the revenue. Now, this is, if, if the fire department, which I think is the aim, potential aim of this future, of why this is really wanting to be killed, is to give the ambulance service over to the fire department. Well, if that was to take place, you're talking multi-million dollars more to the city budget. And the city now, if over ten years, will make about $250,000. All right, we make about $25,000 a year. We're not losing money with this, going with TLC. Now, transferring the CON forthly also allows TLC to make more of an investment into the city, and that's what they're going to do. I mean, they're a company, they want to do well. TLC has to do well by providing good service. So by constructing the building, expanding, a training division, these are all things that they're going to be able to do now, and it's going to benefit the county as well. Some of the volunteer agencies have expressed a desire to have TLC take over some of the smaller volunteer ambulance services in the county. So we cannot, they cannot do this, and it's going to be benefit for, more beneficial for us if they were to do that. Now, I'm going to give you a sixth reason, all right, and this is, this is, in my opinion, the main reason. I want to inoculate the city from ever having an ambulance service. All right, if you, if you at home want to do some research, look what it's done in other communities. You look at Utica, for example. Utica's overtime, since they took over the ambulance service, their overtime jumped from 292,000 to $1 million. That's what their overtime jumped to because they took over the ambulance service. Now you got to look at, okay, let's say the Auburn gets into the ambulance service. Now, the cost of four ambulances, you're looking at at least half a million dollars that city taxpayers have to pay. Now, what do city taxpayers have to pay right now for TLC ambulances? Zero. What do we have to pay for TLC training? Zero. Now, TLC employees are paramedics. Paramedics have training, I believe, two years' worth of training, and they have to have continuous training. How much does the city pay for TLC training? Zero. Now, if the Auburn Fire Department was to take over the ambulance service, we would have to pay for all that training. Now, do you know what it would cost in overtime for Auburn firemen to take someone to upstate medical, or to Kraus Hospital? I mean, it's not this, you drop them off and say, "See you later, buddy, okay, we're gone." No, you have to stay there. So that's added, added overtime. You look at outfitting four ambulances to meet inspection standards, that's at least $120,000. Now, TLC currently does that, but that's on their dime, not ours. So I want to inoculate the city from ever having to spend multi-millions dollars more on, on a department that's already costing us millions of dollars. Now, you can go through the numbers like I have, and you look at Oswego, you look at Potavia, they're all trying to get rid of their city-owned ambulance services. Fire department run ambulance services because it is breaking the bank. So that's another reason why I want to continue with this. I want to inoculate the city from, as best as I can, while I'm still on this council, from having that possibility becoming a reality. So we have a quality, we have a quality service, is correct, and these reasons I gave, that it's only going to benefit the city. Now, if we want to continue, if we want to look at, excuse me, tightening some of the terms up, we can still do that, making sure that we have, if it's clawbacks, if, whatever you want to call it, to make sure that there's more restrictions on them. Now, you say, "Well, Counselor, where are you getting this, that the city wants to run ambulance service?" That the city fire department. 2013, 14 Auburn Fire Department Budget Highlights, okay, and this is from the fire chief. "The department plans to look into pre-hospital medical transport as a possible function of the fire department, but would like to let the impact of new healthcare system play out before." Well, I certainly don't want to see how the Affordable Care Act plays out. "The department is planning on working with the hospital and local medical transport services. The department is currently reviewing for the contract for pre-hospital medical transport," okay, "and requests for proposals for these services." This will break the bank. It'll just lead us, it'll push us that much, expedite the process to bankruptcy. If we were to ever, if the City of Auburn was ever to get into an ambulance service, which pretty much is just meant to justify seventy guys, all right, so we don't need to go that route. And if anyone took a look at the Capitol Confidential in the Times Union newspaper, they compared two cities, Fulton, New York, and Fishkill, New York, two tale of two different cities. One a smaller city, one a larger city, both, both of them are in critical amounts of debt due to binding arbitration and due to large contracts, all right, that they just cannot afford. So we do not need to expand a department that's, that's already costing us a lot of money. So that's the sixth reason why we need to transfer the CON.
Counsel, all of you, I pretty much agree with everything being said this evening, and I'll bring it to your attention that I was the fire chief when TLC came into the city, and we researched it very heavily. It's very cost prohibitive for the fire service to, to run an ambulance service, and that's why we opted into the plan we have. I have a couple of concerns, I don't have six, as Counselor Smith do, does, but first of all, we have a letter from the Department of Health. I don't know if we want to get the city into the position that we're going to be in the middle of something that we don't even belong in to be, in the very first place. Secondly, this is a ten-year contract that is being asked for. We've had public hearings on smaller contracts. We haven't had a chance, in all honesty, to talk with the public about what this may or may not contain, and how it, how it could or could not affect them. And it affects every one of us, because every one of us live in the community, have a family.
Okay, that being said.
I'm not done yet, Counsel, if you, if you please. I'm not prepared at this point to do that. We're rushing into something I don't think we should be rushed into. And lastly, Counselor Zika, before I finish, we should be looking, if we're going to enter into this, we should be issuing RFP. Is, is Counselor Smith said a quarter million dollars over ten years? Well, is that a good bargain? I don't know. Is it, is it worth more? Is it worth less? Until we do, do what we have to do in regards to this, I'm going to make a motion that we table this for the future.
Before you table it, I just, I know you got a motion for it, but I just want to respond to a couple of things if possible.
Counselor Zika is here first.
Okay, but before you put that motion out, I'd like to.
Okay, we've been asking for this for a good number of months.
A year.
Exactly, about a year. Where was the research done when we kept asking for it? There was no research done at all. We asked for the research, we asked, we gave ample time, and finally, it's to this point where everything at the 11th hour is being dumped because we did not get the research. We've asked for this, and it has been nothing but, you know, inactivity. I mean, if, if public business, or if a private business ran like this, again, like I said, it would be in bankruptcy. Now, I would think, to me, that we had, we went down the ambulance thing before with one carrier and we, and TLC, TLC has done exceptional service. I see, when we enter a franchise agreement, we already have history with them, they've done an excellent job. A franchise agreement will, will put the, the, you know, lock and key and all the shackles in place. I don't see any issue or any risk here in moving forward. Again, it's a matter of, of time, because we need to get this in front of the Board of Health, and ultimately, they have, this resolution have the final say. So this is not doing anything or getting us in any bind, because they have the final say. So I, I'm going to support this measure.
Counselor Camardo?
Let me just make thing one, one thing perfectly clear, Counselor Smith, that nobody's advocating that the fire department be an ambulance service for the City of Auburn. I'm advocating that we make sure that we have proper oversight, to make sure that proper services are being provided to their constituents here in the community. Now, John, one question I'm still a little confused on, if the City of Auburn doesn't have a certificate of need, how can they issue a franchise? How do they, can you still have a franchise without a certificate of need, or do they go hand in hand?
No, I think they're somewhat simultaneous.
Right, so if you don't have the certificate of need, how do you have a franchise agreement?
Well, that's a good question. And the other issue that I do have, and quite frankly, in deference to Counselor Zika, no one has ever approached my office asking what the process is for this particular transfer. And one other issue that I do have is that I'm not sure that we are able to issue a ten-year franchise without some kind of competitive bidding or an RFP. That's, those are my feelings at this time. But the council is free to do whatever they want, but I put that as a caveat. I'd like to have something clean and finally done, rather than to keep coming back here with the same issue.
And I don't mean to sound repetitive here, but if you don't have a certificate of need, you can't give out a franchise. How do you have oversight on something if those things don't go hand in hand? How do we protect the constituents in the city, or the taxpayers in the City of Auburn? If you don't have the certificate, you can't authorize a franchise agreement and have certain language in there that protects the taxpayers of the community. I just think that they go hand in hand, and I.
I would think that that would be part also of the regulatory process, that you couldn't just have some entity get the authority to operate an ambulance service from the Department of Health without the municipality's concurrence, or a, an agreement, whether it's a franchise agreement, whatever it may be. I think that that would have to go hand in hand, and that's why I was more comfortable with the contingency that approval by the Health Department would be integral. But I, I don't have to delay the process or be argumentative with anyone, but I am concerned about that legality regarding a ten-year agreement without, we don't, we don't give out million-dollar construction contracts without competitive bidding, and something of this nature may be, and I'm not positive at this point, but it may be required some type of RFP.
We've been with eight years, we've been with Barton Le Judas, they've done every single thing that we've, all the engineering work at the landfill. And we've asked, it's amazing, at the 11th hour, we get this letter, I mean, if that's not political, I don't know what is. So at the 11th hour, we, on the day of the vote, we get this letter saying that we can't do this. But again, this has nothing, this has all to do with the process. Now, Lon, if you want to come up, if you want to answer some of these questions. Lon, TLC screws up, all right, your service, let's say you go, and the company sells to someone else, all right, and you're in a ten-year agreement, okay, what leverage do we have?
All right, let me try to, you guys are making me nervous here tonight. Before we get into this, I just, I'd say we think we have five sixteen-pound turkeys for Salvation Army, so, sorry to digress. A couple of statements have been made here which are not exactly accurate, okay? This is not a ten-year franchise agreement, it's a five-year agreement with an option to renew for five years. It's modeled after the current contract, which is the same, a five-year contract to operate with the option to renew for five years if you're doing a good job. So we're very cognizant of the fact that you can't and shouldn't bind the city for ten years, that, that's not what's being suggested. But let me just back up a little bit. We, we did not initiate this process. We were asked to look into this based on some of the reasons that Counselor Smith brought up. We are, I want to state for the record, we're perfectly happy with our relationship with the city, we have a good one, we've been operating here seven years. I've been here since 1992. This is my second life of EMS in the City of Auburn, and hopefully my last. And so that contract is in, that was renewed in July, is good for five years with a five-year option. We can easily keep going just the way we are, okay? But we were asked to look into what's involved in the transfer of the CON for the reasons of limiting liability and some of those other issues. So that's what we did. We retained the top EMS law firm in the state of New York to help us with our research. You were given copies of a letter we got from them today. We didn't expect Lee Burns. Lee Burns introducing herself into this process in this fashion is unprecedented. It's never happened before. And I would say that it's totally, someone's working very hard to make sure that this never comes before the State Department of Health, because they have the authority. You guys don't authorize the transfer of the CON. You only authorize making an application to do so. Okay, so you make your application, you submit your reasons, and it goes to the Department of Health, and they then decide. of Health, and they then decide whether it can be transferred. Some of the documents that have been supplied show that they are in conflict with one another. The State Department of Health has policies, and there is Article 30, which is the law. They have policies on the transfer of CONs that are contradicting each other. There's a lot of ambiguity. If you read one policy, it says specifically that you can. You read another policy, it says you can't, and so on. Now, I'm no lawyer, but the top EMS lawyer in the state tells me that when that happens, and I defer to Mr. Rossi, who knows a lot more about this stuff than I ever will, that when there's ambiguities like that, it goes to the author loses essentially in that process. Now, I'm not saying you should or should not transfer your CON. I'm saying that if you want to, the way it does, the way it happens is an application is made, exhibits and stuff go to the state, they make a decision, yea or nay. In the meantime, nothing would change because we would continue to operate under the existing contract that we have. As far as oversight, I happen to agree that the city should have good oversight over the service. And that is done, you gain oversight a couple of ways. First of all, the State Department of Health has very stringent regulations, which we have to adhere to. Any violation of those regulations can bring the state in. The region, the central New York region, has stringent regulations, protocols, continuous quality improvement, oversight. This all goes on invisible to the community, but we're constantly in the loop of review and improvement and quality assurance, and that goes on all the time. Every ambulance company, not just us. Thirdly, whether through the contract that is an operation, operating the Auburn City Ambulance, as we're doing now, or the franchise agreement which simply mirrors that, what you currently have. It was, I was asked to put something together, and all we did was take the existing contract and kind of rebrand it as a potential franchise agreement. So all of those things, response time, adequate equipment, personnel, you know, and so on, are in that. And you have the ability, if we fail in some way, we have to be put on notice in 60 days. If we don't correct the situation, you can drop the ax. The other point that was raised about how, John, I think you raised, you know, how do you have a franchise agreement? The municipality has the authority at all times to, if you have more than one provider, which you do, there's Rural Metro and there's, TLC would be TLC if this took place, it's up to the municipality to designate who their primary provider is. This goes on all over. And let me give you an example. In Anadaga County, there are two county-wide CONs, Rural Metro and TLC. And then there are a number of other TLC, a number of other CONs in communities. So Nova has one, and Navac has one, and Eves has one, and Waves has one, and so on, and so on, and so on.
Do they have franchises or certificates?
They all have certificates of need. So there are communities in Anadaga County that have three ambulance providers. Their home group, I'll use Nova as an example, North Anadaga Volunteer Ambulance Corps. So they have a certificate of need for their territory. Rural Metro has a certificate of need for their territory. TLC has a certificate of need for their territory.
In Anadaga County?
In Anadaga County.
And Anadaga County doesn't hold a certificate?
No, 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 they don't have a certificate of need, neither does Huguen County. The municipality and their community, their township determines who is their primary provider. And they, oh, pretty much always, it's the local, you know, Nova would be their number one. After Nova, it would either be Rural Metro or TLC. If neither one of those is available, then you go to Mutual Aid, the nearest ambulance you can get your hands on. So there's no question that the municipality always retains the authority to determine who is their primary provider. The last thing I would say, and again, you know, we're good with the contract, we're good to pursue the transfer, if that's what you want, whatever you want, we'll carry it to conclusion. The last thing I would say that is that, you know, the boogeyman under the bed is what happens if TLC turns into a terrible provider? The door for need never closes. You or any other organization in this community, if there's a deficiency, has the right to apply for a CON. What's not transferable is the municipal declaration. That was a special thing put in the law to allow municipality to say, we got a problem, we got to solve the problem, and just give us a license so we can get going. That expired two years after it was issued. And we had to go through, the city had to go through, I say, we, I kind of feel like I belong here. We had to go through a certificate of need, public hearing, to prove that there was a need to begin with in the city. And we did it right here in this room. And a finding of need was made by the regional council. It was unopposed, it was unanimous. And the certificate then trans, went from being a municipal declaration to what's called a permanent operating authority. And that's what you've had now for, since 2008. If both certificated providers fail to provide you with good service and you have documentable, demonstrable service deficits, the normal access for a CON, the normal process to apply for operating authority is still open to the city. Or you could designate the fire department, or you could create a third service, or you could create a community organization and back that. And if the deficiency was critical or serious, you can pick up the phone, call the State Department of Health, and get emergency operating authority that fast. That's good for two months. During those two months, you fill out the forms, and it becomes permanent.
Lon, according to what John Rossi had told me, it takes quite a long time to get a need back, correct, John?
It was difficult to begin with. You know, we haven't been through the process of turning it in and getting it back.
The other thing I would point out is in Article 30, which is the law, not the policy statements, it specifically states, and I gave everybody a copy of it just so you can educate yourself to this point, that once the municipal declaration has been converted to a permanent authority, there is nothing in the law that prevents you from taking advantage of any other aspect of, or opportunity within Article 30. And that includes your right to transfer it, to do whatever. That's what the law says. So again, let me say, we're okay with operating under the contract that exists for the next five years with a five-year option to renew. We're okay with converting it to a franchise agreement, in which case we've tried to set the franchise fee, which is, I mean, this is a very small community. You know, too little to be big, too big to be little. You know, the population is going down, Medicaid reimbursements are going down. We've tried to increase that franchise fee a little bit upfront, so there's a little more coming into the city right away. But you're not going to get rich on a franchise fee, and you're not allowed to. It's there to cover your, any costs, meetings, Mr. Rossi's time, anything you've got to do to maintain your oversight. It's not a profit mechanism, really. But those are the two options that you have. It's up to you. It's what you want to do, it's your will. And we're your contractor, and we'll go with whichever option you choose. We'll do as we're obligated to do under our contract, to carry out your instructions, to provide information, to negotiate the process. It's up, we're following your direction essentially at this point. Whatever, and we're happy with and comfortable with whatever decision you make. It's not coming from us. It's coming from you guys and from the reasons that were discussed earlier. So I hope that clarifies a little bit about this. And, you know, are there any questions I can...
Counsel, two things. I hit a motion for it to table this. I'm going to pull it back at this time. I still have the right later on in the discussion, but just to keep us all on track and just to keep moving forward in discussion, so. Counsel, it's up, Mr. Fracano, do you want to ask him any questions or anything? I'm just trying to keep us on track.
You talked about Anadaga County and them providing a primary service. Do they have franchise agreements with the, you know, the three services that you talked about? Because I don't think...
No, in that case, I mean, there are, I don't know if, I use Nova as an example. I don't know the inner workings of what the town has, I'm sure they have an agreement of some kind. It's not necessarily a franchise, they're a nonprofit organization, so...
I think the right, the municipality just should be a provider.
Municipality, when there's more than one, you get to pick who your primary provider is.
If you don't have a certificate of...
If you don't have a certificate, if there's no certificate of need, somebody has to get one, right? In some cases, there's more than one, in which case you have the authority to say, that's our number one, that's our number two, that's our number three. That's how it works.
Mr. Fracano, I think that the comment was inappropriate about the Department of Health making a, sending a letter. I don't think it was very appropriate with the person not being able to defend himself, so I, I'm just advising you, that's my thoughts.
I know Lee Burns very well. I have a lot of respect for her. She's a wonderful, wonderful person.
It's inappropriate.
Okay.
Lon?
Yes, sir.
What would be, we know what, and in discussions, that Counselor Smith expanded on, that there would be benefits to the community as far as the training and the, another building and, could you expand on this for us?
Well, there's some value-added benefits if we have the CON. I mean, things that we could do then that we couldn't do now, in that sense, which aren't necessary for us to do, mind you, okay? But if we have, if the CON is in our name, then we can invest in the community, we can build a building. Right now, we occupy about 46 or 4700 square feet. We really could use about 7,000 or 8,000. But we're obviously not going to build a building on a short-term contract. It would allow us to flow more vehicles and equipment into the system whenever it's needed because the way we operate now, we're restricted to using the vehicles that are identified as Auburn City ambulance vehicles, even though everybody talks about it like it's TLC, it really isn't TLC, it's Auburn City ambulance. So if we needed to flow five extra ambulances into the community for an event, we couldn't do it because they're not Auburn City ambulances, you see what I mean? When it comes to the volunteer organizations that have approached us and said, hey, we can't do ambulance service anymore, can you help us? Can you take it over for us? These are small, tiny operations, do 100 calls a year, 120 calls a year, 150 calls a year. We could, we could provide them with an EMT and help them provide better service to their community, but we can't do that. It would be a disservice to offer to do that with them if we didn't have a permanent stake, if we weren't permanent stakeholders in the community. So we would have to back off from things like that. It wouldn't affect the delivery of service to the city of Auburn. It would put limits on what we could do beyond that. So, I mean, there are some value-added services that could be made available. They're certainly not, it's not the city's problem that a volunteer organization in the county can't manage ambulance service. But we could help them if we were in that position, and we would. So those kinds of things are what we're referring to.
Lon, at the 911 call center, you had the C of O. Do you have more of a presence there?
Well, I mean, you know, I don't know that we have more of a presence. I mean, we could certainly advocate for dispatch procedures and so on. Right now, that, we don't have that voice. You guys have that voice, it's how you want things done. We certainly would still continue to work in conjunction with the city, as we're obligated to do. But it would give us a little more status at the 911 center, but again, that's not necessary.
So that now that we have a medical priority dispatch...
Right.
All right, we could prioritize calls, all right? And especially if you're in here for this long-term haul and you have more of an investment in here, instead of sending a ladder truck to a broken ankle at the Whitefield, we could just directly send you, it could be more of the first responders.
That is, that's not untrue. That's up to you, how you, how you want your system to operate, it falls to you, okay? So every municipality, every community has different standards of what they want. As I've said many times over the years, I think we have an excellent system in Auburn through both companies. We have an excellent fire department, highly responsive, highly trained, very dedicated, on the scene very quickly. We have ambulances right behind them, or at the same time, 99.9% of the time, I have no desire to see anything, personally have any desire to see anything change. However, the pressures that you're under, which we're all aware of, I guess, and that's up to you to make those decisions and have your folks sit down with us and determine what would be appropriate if there are going to be changes made. That certainly wouldn't be our, our say, if you will.
So the city still has jurisdiction, so to speak, in all the calls that...
Yeah, of course.
Thanks, Lon.
Mr. Rossi, it was pointed out to me, in the last paragraph, after the following discussion tonight, I think, I'd like a clarification. It reads...
Mayor, were you reading what?
On the Council Resolution Number 132, Counselor, the last one, the last paragraph, "Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Auburn does hereby transfer the ambulance certificate, ambulance service certificate." Should it be, should it say something more or less in line with make application to transfer it?
Yes, if that's what you want, if that's your intention.
I'm asking our attorney.
Well, whatever we did, this has been amended to be subject to the approval of the Department of Health.
But the way I read it, it says we're transferring it. Should it reflect that we're making an application to transfer it? Are we covered?
I think we're covered with the amendment. And again, this was prepared prior to any indication by the Department of Health that that transfer was not proper. But I think with the, you have two fallbacks here. One is the approval of the Department of Health, the second is to enter into a satisfactory franchise agreement with the provider.
Okay.
And I'm going to add a third condition again, providing that we are doing a proper negotiation without a requirement of an RFP. If that is required, we'll come back with it.
Now, John, just, I know we put in there about the franchise agreement, but if this certificate of need goes away, is there still a franchise that can be given out?
As I say, it's going to be like simultaneously. You're not going to transfer your, you know, I think I'm right when I say it's not really a certificate of need, it's an authority to operate an ambulance.
Well, that's, yeah, but you're not...
But either way, you know...
You're not going to have a document that's going to spell out all, because I don't understand how you can have a certificate of need and still give out a franchise. That would go away...
You're not going to relinquish yours until you have an agreement in place. Once you have an agreement in place, then you'll, then you will relinquish your authority. Yeah, so that did be a condition precedent.
Right, okay.
Counsel, at this time, I'll make a motion once again to table this, this resolution. Do we have a second?
A second.
Counsel Kamardo? Clerk, if you could call the roll, please, to table.
To table. Counsel Grady?
No.
Counsel Kamardo?
We don't have all the information in front of us, so I'm going to say yes.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Counsel Ruzika?
No.
Mayor Quill?
As Counsel Kamardo said, we discussed, we do not have enough information to make this a good decision this evening, so I'm voting yes to table.
Okay, two yes to table and three no, so it's not tabled.
Thank you.
And a question, Counsel, or any other discussion?
Nope. It's called a motion.
I'm sorry?
It's called a motion to vote.
Okay, so as amended?
As amended.
Yes.
Okay.
By Counsel Ruzika's amendment.
Right. Counsel Grady?
Yes.
Counsel Kamardo?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Ruzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
No.
Local laws?
None.
Table legislation?
None.
Other business, Counsel?
Yes, we had some, we made a vote on some surplus plower property, and I've had a few people that come up and ask me about the firehouse. What's the activity been on that? Is that...
On Frederick Street, right?
Frederick Street, yes. Has that been out for a bit, or...
We're looking to try to get representation to market it through the Huguen County Realtors.
Okay.
Through the, rather than pick out one Realtor, give it to the organization and let them...
So what's the timeframe that that's going to happen? I'd like to see this back on the tax...
Imminent, imminent, yeah.
And then for four weeks now, I've been asking for the reports on the, on the fire department's activities. I mean, we got another one this week from the police, and this is very important information. I think the public needs to know what they're paying for. Now, the police send this to the newspaper, and I was told that it was published, activities were published in the newspaper, I think, just this past week. were published in the newspaper, I think, just this past week. It's interesting note, the calls and volumes of service calls here, especially the numbers that in many ways are kind of shocking and indicative of the problems we're now facing as far as the community. So again, I'd like to remind it that this has been now four weeks that I've been asking for the fire reports along the same lines, and I would also like it if the, since the police send it to the newspaper, I'd like that also sent in the newspaper. The public needs to know what they're paying for.
Mr. Selby, jumping on with Counselor Razika, who prepares the police report? Is that the police chief, or?
He has an individual in the department that does that.
A civilian employee?
Right, and they've been doing that for quite a long time, so it's fairly well-established. It's a fairly recent thing that I've had them start doing the graphs, and so we can see some trends. And I am working with Chief De Geer. We talked about it again this morning. I think he was trying to get too detailed right out of the gate, so I said, "Well, let's work on trending what you do have and get those reports done." So we hear you, Counselor.
We're working to share services. Why don't we have the same employee do both reports? They have one person--
If they have the bandwidth.
Yeah.
They have one person, I don't know what the individual's jobs are, but it might be a way to share services and produce the report.
I'll talk to both chiefs about doing that. Maybe it'd be a, maybe a combined public safety report, then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The problem is, you got one that has 20,000 calls and one that has 4,000 calls.
Should be easier than picking up the fire department, then.
I'm just saying, I'm sure he has enough, though, doing 20,000. But ask him.
I just, I just had a few things in regards to follow up on weekly items. I know our recap is on the agenda, and could we keep the requested, you know, comments by counselors on there until they've been, you know, taken care of on the recap so that they're not forgotten about and we stay on top of that? Yeah, leave them on until they've been, you know, satisfactory.
Keep them as a punch list, yeah.
I can work with the city manager, because I have no idea of when they've been taken care of.
Sure, that's fine. I'd just like them to stay on there so that, you know, until--
Counsel, it would be helpful when they are cleared out, if it appears on our agenda, as to what the action taken, and then we can put it--
Sure.
You want them on, you want them included with the agenda?
Sure. Yeah, okay. I can work with you on that, Deb, because I keep--
You do.
--track at my desk, yeah. And Doug, I'd like a copy of all the legal bills and the amount of overtime that's been so far accrued and with the fire department in regards to the legal--
Outside legal costs.
Right, outside legal costs, and especially all the overtime that's been incurred since the cuts in the department have been made.
You want the total legal cost from the inception of the negotiations?
Right, please.
Anything else, Counsel?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
We'll be here Monday.
Sorry?
We, tonight.
We got one more meeting.
Don't forget.
Do we have a request for executive session?
Yes, I have three matters of contract negotiations and lawyer-client discussions on city matters.
Very well. At this time, I'm going to take a motion for executive session. Counselor Camardo, did I say?
Yes, please.
Second, Counselor Grady?
Yep.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Grady?
Yes.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Razika?
Yes.
I vote yes. We will see everyone Tuesday evening at 6:00.
8:00 AM.